Diane Trapasso.
Marge Cooney.
Josh Cole.
Okay, the agenda for tonight at 6:35, we have a public hearing for a special permit by Badger Road for Daniel Kirchner. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow the construction of a 560-square-foot detached accessory dwelling unit. At 6:45, we have a determination, 322, The Trail, Jennifer DePrez is to demolish the existing three-season room on the lake and replacing it with a deck, dining room extension, extend the basement beneath the dining room and to create additional living space. Then we have town planner update and old business, new business. We have the minutes of June 26, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to read them over? Do we have any corrections or comments or anything on the minutes? No? If not, could I have a motion to accept the minutes of June 26, 2024?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Here we have four and one extension. Okay, we still have a few more minutes. So I'll just go over. Our next meeting is August 21st. Do we have anything so far yet?
I'm the same. I think there is something coming in. We've talked to a couple of people, just not sure on the timing of when they'll file.
Okay.
If they get in, in time.
Okay, alright.
But I do believe there is one.
Something? Would it be a public hearing or?
I think so because I remember thinking you had a conflict that week, but that you could be here.
Yeah, I can be here if there isn't.
Because I think I remember saying, oh, Diane will have to probably come.
Alright, no problem.
But we'll keep you posted.
Okay.
I don't know why I'm drawing a blank on it tonight.
That's okay.
My allergies have bothered me. I don't have colds.
And then the next meeting is, the September meeting is September 18th. So we'll see what happens with that. We still have a few more minutes. Is there any old business or new business that anybody wants to comment on or anything? Nothing? Anything else going on that we should know about, Jean?
Not really.
Okay, alrighty.
Fairly quiet summer, permit-wise. I think building has slowed down a little bit because of some of the building code changes. I think as people kind of try to navigate the new code and figure out how it may impact their projects. And also I know there's been some delays with National Grid too. People that need new services, they have a lack of transformers and things. We just found that with Blueberry Hill Estates, which didn't have to come to the zoning board, but just kind of interesting.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Let's see, we have a couple more minutes.
That clock's a little bit slow.
Yeah, we have like one more minute.
Yes.
To go, so. Fidelis, will you read the legal notice when it's time? I know, just one minute.
The longer you look at it, the sooner it's going to be.
It's gonna take, yeah, it's gonna take, hopefully now it's, yeah, didn't turn yet. I don't really have anything else to say except to do.
Tap it again, it might be time.
It might be time. Oh my. There you go. It's time, okay. Fidelis is gonna read the legal notice?
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, zoning board of appeals would hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 24, 2024, at 6:35 PM, at the center of his building located at 301 Main Street, Starbridge MA 01566. And/or by virtual means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with applicable law on the application of Daniel P. Kirchner. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300-18.2 (open and close to) and Article 10, sorry, Article 11, Section 300-11.1-11.6 of the zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a 560-square-feet detached accessory dwelling unit on the property owned by Daniel P. Kirchner, located at 5 Badger Road, in accordance with the plans and application submitted. The proposed request can be viewed on the town website, or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Starbridge Planning Department at 508. 347.2508, or by email at jlacy@starbridge.com. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Signed, Diane Trapasso, Chair, Starbridge Zoning Board of Appeal.
Thank you. Okay, first you can make your presentation and then we can go from there.
So, this is my first time doing this. I'm Daniel P. Kirchner. The goal is to, to put a small house that's quite subordinate to my house for my son, who's getting married in August. As you probably all are aware, the housing expenses, whether rent, building, or buying, are ridiculous. So at least with this, I already own the land. There's no competition and I've gotten a fairly good deal going on a modular log home, two-by-six construction. It's a solidly-built home that will be shipped and placed with a crane. So that's a rendering of the, of the log home. It's got more traditional siding. We didn't go with the log siding, but it's very solidly-built with dual insulation between foam and fiberglass. I think the R-value was over 40, but I've got to confirm all that with the, to get the building permit. But yeah, so that's the plan. It's all within the setbacks. It's, I don't think there's any variances or anything like that. I just think it requires a special permit because of, of the, of the code. Steven, anything you want to add? This is my builder, Steven Soper.
How you doing? Not really. I mean, Jean looked at all this stuff already and like Dan said, there's no setback issues, there's no conservation issues. It's 560 square feet, it's smaller than his house. It's kind, this is kind of like the heart, I believe, of the reason why the town passed these kind of laws is to kind of keep families together and make it so that, you know, the cost of having these families together doesn't, you know, put some people out of the market, you know? And there's, there's bylaws, you know, and he's not planning on renting it right now. It's, you know, it's kind of like the last one I did, same type of situation.
That's where I got the idea. It was, it was my mother-in-law that did the last one.
They got that whole corner of the world kind of.
What, when they put it down, what kind of a footing or what do they put?
It'd be a foundation with a crawl space.
With a crawl space.
Yeah, I don't want to do a basement there because we have some.
Standing, yeah.
We've got some ledge up, up there a little bit, so I don't want to go very deep because it would just cost me more money. And, you know, he's a young man with, without a lot to store at this point, so.
Just wondering what kind of footing or something they put under there, that's the construction one, you know?
I just want to go over the department memos. There are really no issues at all from conservation. The fire and the building, I guess, are asking for two means of egress.
Yep, it'll have a front door and a back slider, so that won't be a problem.
That's all addressed. And Jean's, I mean, do you want to go over your report or do you, do you just, do you have any?
Sure, I can. So I provided a report to both you and the applicant on July 16th and went through each of the criteria. I did find that it meets all of the requirements of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. As Diane noted, it's clearly subordinate to the primary residence. It's actually quite small, at only 560 square feet, so it's really small and it will function as its own separate housekeeping unit. And this is the only one that is proposed. You can have one per property. And the owners, Diane, will continue to occupy the main home with his son and his wife occupying the small cottage or small log home. To me, it doesn't look like a log home because it has a regular siding.
Traditional siding.
For calling it.
It was my wife's preference.
The home will be compatible with the existing dwelling unit. I did provide photos of the existing house. Also, it's kind of nice that it's, while it's on the same lot, there's a lot of vegetation, so it really will be separated from the main house, so they'll have their kind of separate space. And there will be a driveway constructed to access the property. The only, I did not receive comments from the health inspector. However, I know Steve's done this with the last one. Diane has reached out to Ken Lacy and the health department. They'll just have to meet together. They have done their water inspections on the well and the septic system, so they need to provide those to show that it's adequate to handle the new unit. So I think as long as you approve with that as one of the conditions, then I think they've really met everything.
Okay, alright. Any comments from the board? Josh, do you have? Marge?
I was just curious because you got the thing from our fire inspector, Janette, so you understand that you have to comply with what she said in the memo.
Yeah, that was already planned, two egresses, and it will be just a crawl space, so it'll be pretty level to the ground already.
And wired and, you know, the interconnected smoke alarms that she's talking about.
Oh, within the dwelling.
Within the dwelling unit, that's what I'm questioning.
Yep.
So, but.
I think that's the only way they come these days.
Yeah, and you, you agreed to maintain the property and everything.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And according to what they say, since it's a private road, pretty much. I just have a question for Jean.
Okay.
In case it ever comes up again, I mean, this more than, in my opinion, complies with the accessory dwelling bylaw. But if he had, or if somebody in the future wants to build a larger one, is it still the 750 square feet limit?
No, so the 750 is the minimum dwelling size unless otherwise allowed in the bylaw. So the accessory dwelling unit bylaw specifically says to be subordinate to the primary and some people have.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
It could even be larger than 750.
Oh, okay. No, I was just wondering, you know?
It really depends on the size of the main house. And then in some cases, there's also a clause in there that, you know, for instance, if somebody were handicapped and you had a very small house, it would be very difficult to build one that's not almost the same size, to be able to have the hallways that you need or the bathroom that you need. So I really think you need to look at it case by case.
Because I was just wondering, I mean, in a dwelling unit, we had said that you had to have a minimum of 750 square feet. So I was just wondering if that would apply as a maximum or something.
No, not as a maximum.
Accessory dwelling.
Right.
For future reference, that's all.
Typically, it would be the minimum. If it were a standalone, single-family home, the minimum square footage is 750.
It was still 750, alright. So I was just wondering, you know?
Yeah, we haven't done like tiny homes or anything yet.
No, nobody does anything small anymore.
Not sure I could live in that. My closet's probably bigger than some of the tiny homes.
Mary Ann? No, no question.
Just a comment. So the only reason why this is here is because it's an accessory unit. That's it, right?
Right, right. Okay.
Believe me, if the cost of housing were better, I would be helping him buy a house, not a 560-square-foot.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public?
You're here for your own project.
Okay, okay. The criteria, we just kind of went over with Jean and they meet all the criteria, so now we just have to make a motion to hopefully grant the special permit?
Motion to grant the special permit.
Okay.
But I'm, okay, I just made the motion.
Okay, okay.
The conditions.
With the, with the four conditions.
Yep.
I mean, the board of health.
Yeah.
And this, yeah.
Want me to just read them to you?
I think I know what it is, yeah.
You probably got them from Jean, so it'll be with those four conditions.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a second? Josh, okay, all in favor?
Yay!
Alright, that was quick, alright.
You could just spend more money.
Good luck with it.
Yes, thank you guys.
Enjoy.
Aren't you supposed to close?
Yes, thank you. Motion to close the public hearing?
I think it works.
Second? Second. Alright, all in favor?
You're welcome.
I forgot after the public that we needed to call. Thank you. Marge just got me so surprised about doing it.
Yeah, I thought we closed, I thought we have the finding.
Pardon me?
We closed the finding and then.
There's no, the finding, the finding, there's no finding in the accessory.
Only because it's a conforming lot. If it were a non-conforming lot, you would need to go through the finding.
Right.
Yeah. It gets a little, and it, yeah. You're so used to dealing with non-conforming lots, but in, in this case, his lot was conforming, but he needed the special permit. So, and then Tim's here because he has a non-conforming lot.
Okay, now we have a determination for 322, The Trail, for Jennifer DePrez and.
She's my wife.
Okay, so you can make your presentation.
Yeah, so we're looking to put a, some living space off of our main living area there. We currently just don't really have quite enough space for our, we've got two kids, a big mutt dog, and, and our dining room table as is just sort of doesn't fit in the space, so we were hoping to have like a dining room. We're right on the, on the lake there. So the space would go out with a, including the basement, it's a walkout basement towards the, towards the lake. So, you know, what is the main living floor is actually, you know, elevated on the lake side of the house with the walkout basement. So the, the room underneath the proposed dining room would be extra living playspace for the kids. And a deck would butt up against both the main floor and the basement floor, the top deck being open air, the bottom deck being screened in, sort of living and dining space. Yeah, so I, this is actually my first time doing this as well, so if there's something I'm not talking about yet, you just let me know.
Okay, first of all, we'll just, I'll just go over the department memos. Let's see, there are no issues. You just have to, with EPW, just protect the sewer grinder pump during construction?
Yeah, of course. The grinder pump, you can see on the site map, is actually on the complete opposite side of the house. So that won't be a big concern for this project.
Fire has no issues? Conservation? You, and now?
Yeah, I've got my, I've put in my notice of intent. The state DEP is, is pretty sluggish right now, so I, I got everything in on my deadline, but I haven't received a DEP number yet. And so I went to the last conservation meeting and issued a continu-, just to open the, the case, and I issued a continuance. I did present the whole case to them and they were very favorable that it's outside of the 50-foot mark and the erosion control measures proposed were acceptable to them. The one thing that I, I didn't mention yet, which is actually in regards to the board, I, I am currently dealing with the board of health to, to deal with the, the location of the well, is actually right there, yep. And so that seems like it will be a non-issue as well, but as, as it stands, our, we have a noisy, very old jet pump in our basement that's getting the water out on demand. I want to get a submersible pump in that and get the whole well above ground, just because it's like a time bomb as a homeowner to have a noisy old jet pump in the basement. So while we're doing this, while we're digging, I just want to get that well above the ground. But the issue that conservation just wanted my, me to, you know, dot our eyes about was getting that well above the ground, but also having a deck right over it, what is like the, the need or that what, what are the requirements of the board of health? And again, they don't seem too concerned, the Connecticut Valley Artisan Wells, who's doing the work, they said it happens all the time. It's, it is amply far away from the actual structure. Having a deck over it would just only be maybe a slight headache to me, the homeowner, because we just need to get to it in an emergency. We would build a, like a access hatch to it. And so that's the current plan. I do need to continue on with the board of health and just getting some paperwork done to, but my first couple conversations were, there was no reason to think this was a big deal.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's, and building had no issues with this?
Another thing I'll mention is that this project was selected as the Tantascqua Student Build Project for the next school year. So I am trying to get this all done so that those kiddos can get, get over and start to learn.
Good, good for them, okay.
Very good.
Okay, so do we have any questions from the board? Jean, do you want to say anything or?
No, I'll just concur with everything that he said. I have spoken to the conservation agent. We don't anticipate any issues with conservation. He is correct, DEP is very backlog-ed. There, I think that they said they had 51 cases before him to get a final number, so hopefully that will move along as quickly as it can. And it's the same with the well issue. I think he's operating at his own risk if he chooses to cover his well and if anything happened, and he is working with the board of health on that, so I have no concerns with the proposal.
Okay, Fidelis, do you have any questions or Mary Ann? No. No, I don't have it. Marge?
I just have, it's a very minor thing, okay?
Yeah?
On the application, they say the proposed conditions, the existing conditions as far as the lot area is 21,907 square feet. And then.
Oh, it's a typo.
And then they have 22,125 in the proposed.
Typo, or.
And then, and then on the, the actual plan by LeVey, it also shows 21,907. So can we just have those initialled?
Yep.
And the same thing with the proposed, it shows 74.4 on the LeVey plan.
For frontage.
Yes, and, and here it says 74.7. So just to keep everything consistent.
Sure, yeah, so, so just so I can, just so I can address those inconsistencies.
And just initial it.
I just scratched it out. So it's just here.
Yeah, that's my fault.
In here, so if you, I just fixed it, so if you could initial those two.
Sure.
Somebody that used to be involved with statistics. I look at those things.
I didn't even pick up on those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that's, that's no problem.
It's no big problem.
Changed these numbers to, sitting in the office with some white-out because the plan changed a little bit, so.
Yes, and I have just, no, not in direct to this one, but I'll go back on the role business.
Okay, okay. Josh, any questions?
This is more just my curiosity than anything else, but just on the well being moved above ground, I mean, the, the well access, like is, is it shallow?
No, it's a, it's, it's a good well, it's deep, but it's old enough that the top of the well is four feet underground. That's how it used to be.
Okay, got it.
Whenever, whenever they put it in the 50s. So it's, the, the pump itself is not in the well like it currently.
The basement.
It's in the basement, so it's kind of out of my basement, there's like a 45-degree angle. I had the company come out with some gizmos and gadgets to, to find it because I, I myself tried to find it with a metal detector and a shovel and I couldn't find it. So they had some gadget that helped them figure out exactly where it is. We marked the ground there and that's where we'll dig and find the top of the well. And then, and then what they're gonna do is just bring, like sleeve it and bring it to the, bring it, bring the casing up to the top. And then use the existing piping to get like electricity and the water back and forth. And then they're gonna sink a submersible well pump, like, you know, which would be like common practice these days, just the usual ones. They'll sink one to the bottom after they like measure how deep it is. I'm, I'm really curious to find out actually how deep it is. It's, it's very, it's a very good well. I mean, it's, it's, it's done well for us. We've, we certainly tax it as a, as a family with kids, so.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? No? Okay, can I have a motion to grant the determination? Anyone?
I have a motion.
A second? I think he was.
I'm sorry.
We're all so quick tonight.
Everybody was prepared.
I'll make a motion to grant the determination for the applicant, Jennifer DePree.
DePree.
DePree. To demolish the existing three-season room on the lake-facing side of the house and replace the deck, dining room extension, extend the basement beneath the dining room to create additional living space and create a screened-in outdoor deck and dining space under the new deck. The proposal will not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure or create any new And the owner may apply for building permit for the described activities as shown on the submitted revised architectural plan titled "New Rear Addition for DePree Residence", with a date of July 5, 2024.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Second, alrighty, okay. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll get the signed determination to you tomorrow if you want to sign.
Okay, yeah, I'll stop because I have to talk to the board of health.
Yeah, okay.
Cool. We'll see you tomorrow. Thank you all.
Good luck.
Does anybody else have any other new business? Marge, you said you.
Well, it's, it's not really, no, but I usually ask if the abudders' notices have been returned and we didn't ask on these.
Oh, yes, Janette has them in the file. Not in the packets, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
So actually, we changed our practice for the special permits. Janette is actually doing the notice to abudders. It was getting awfully expensive for applicants to do certified mail. It was ridiculous, quite frankly. So they are paying for the regular postage and she is mailing them out, which, because the law only says they have to be made, mailed postage prepaid. So I just thought it was an excessive burden on the applicant, so we've changed that practice for both planning and zoning board. So that's why, that's why we're not putting the list in sometimes because probably on her desk, typing envelopes.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure so that nobody comes back later and say, we're in a butter and we won't notify, you know?
No, we're taking care of that internally now. Between that and the advertising and the filing fee, it's a lot.
Okay, but should we still be asking?
We won't get certified cards back because I'm just mailing it regular mail.
Okay.
So what I'm having her do is sign. I'll put the affidavit that'll make in your packets going forward. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, she does an affidavit, certifying. Yep, she does an affidavit certifying on which day she mailed them out.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, just so that we.
Yep, sure.
Don't have to pay any legal fees. There was a time when we had quite a few with them, believe me.
Okay, anything else? No? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you, everyone.